All right, Dean, we got you back on.
Okay, it's six o'clock. We're gonna start with our school district, school board committee forum. And I'll turn over your round.
Sure, sure. This evening, thanks everybody for joining us. This evening, we've got some Girl Scouts from 6380. And Brianna Reed approached us with some other Scouts too as well about a project they would like to wanted to kind of do for some badges and things like that. So they said, can we come and present? They said, certainly. So Brianna, we're gonna let you and your group take it over. You have the floor. Stay over here.
Hi, my name is Itzhel Elagno. So we are, this is part of our Silver Award, which is a patch that yeah, that you have to do, yeah, help our community. So first, we had to create a take action project, which was, it was Oops Did We Pollute?, which was in the Merton Mano, the Merton Magazine, the Northlake Wave, the Town Hall, and the Town Hall Library Newsroom. And it's to bring us back to the community to help the Merton and Northlake School districts.
So the current conditions of light transference, you see, were not in great shape. So what we decided to do was restore them. But they knew what it would and allow to be a use for us to make them more new. And then we're also going to do some landscaping like we were and mulch and weed. And then once they pass the water test, we're writing standards for a better finish.
So on the left, you can see what the benches were before we did them and as we were building them. And, and this was at Northlake School. And there was little seating and it was really hard to work on the tables because they were really, they were like the, yeah, they had a lot of holes.
We have to bring like the ones that stuff to work outside.
Yes.
After we end up making like eight different benches.
Oh, six.
So after what we made, and we created eight different benches.
Six.
Six different benches that all converted into a table where you can sit on them and then you can flip the part where all sitting against. Take them into a table where we can work on it.
And the other thing I want to add to the benches is they're also, they go down slowly so they don't hurt anyone. And are there any questions?
So when do you think the Merton ones will be done?
We're gonna start looking at them soon. All we need to do is get our supplies and we should be out here in like one or two weeks and we should be done.
But they're necessarily not gonna be completely done until fall because we have to let the wind dry and then we have to stay there. Thank you for having us. We're looking forward to the new Merton classroom.
Well, thank you, girls, for coming and showing a little bit about the work you're doing. Thank you very much for restoring those. We appreciate, Mrs. Roden or Mrs. Doran out will greatly appreciate that too because I know music classes often can roll them outside too as well. So thank you. Okay, so we had a number of folks sign in. But it doesn't look like anybody wants to address the boards. You're able to if you'd like to. One, twice. Okay, if not, we will roll right into our Board of Education meeting. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's been hosted in all the normal customary spots. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all please rise. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, on to agenda item number four.
I will be approved agenda presented.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. All those ayes, same side. Motion carries. Agenda number five.
I will be approved the minutes from Monday, May 23rd. Open and closed session Wednesday, June 8th, opening, closed session. Thursday, June 9th, open and closed session. Thursday, June 9th, again, open and closed session. Monday, June 13th, open, closed session. And then the second meeting on Monday, June 13th, open and closed session.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those ayes, same side. Motion passes. Okay, I will make a motion to approve the voucher listing dated May 17th, 2022 through June 10th, 2022. Payroll check number 553818 in the amount of $110.08. Check number 553819 in the amount of $166.23. Direct deposit 900056942 through 900057048 in the amount of $161,051.39. Direct deposit number 900057049 through 900057156 in the amount of $149,768.63. Wire transfer 202100336 through 202100364 in the amount of $298,419.8 cents for total payroll of $606,516.15. Accounts payable check numbers 55311 through 55345 in the amount of $175,153.24. Wire transfer 202100351 through 202100352 in the amount of $1,543.39. Wire transfer 202100365 through 202100366 in the amount of $2,787.90. Credit transaction 52022 in the amount of $32,961.85. ACH direct deposit 212200111 through 212200122 in the amount of $778.35. For total accounts payable, $213,224.73 for total disbursements of $822,740.88. Second. Okay, there's motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions for April? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those ayes, same side. Motion carries. Delegations to be heard. Anybody? Thank you. Okay, on to administrators' report.
Sure. No donations this month. Okay, so we'll just go right to personnel actions. So you can see a busy, busy month for personnel actions. So again, you'll see some letters of resignation here. Again, we'd like to thank these individuals, Casey West, Kate Gerchely, Jeanette Sneddon, and Lisa Schuber for their dedication efforts towards our students and our community. Joanne Kovish again has requested to go part-time. So in order for her to go to part-time, she had to resign her full-time contract. So you'll see five letters of resignation there to be acted on a little bit later if that's the role of the board. Then again, very busy hiring season. So again, a big huge thank you to our administrative team as well as the staff. In fact, the boss is right here. He's been part of a lot of these. So we'd like to thank our staff. We've really been a collaborative effort in finding some very, very good individuals. Very happy with the people who we are recommending to be offered an individual teaching contract. First, we'd like to bring offer Megan Halback, again, nine years of experience coming back to the States from some international work. Amy Currie, yes, for for speech. Kristen Barth for fourth grade. Josh Much for third grade. Tricia Burby for special education. Lacey Ritzka for our part-time family consumer care position. Joanne Kovish, as mentioned before, part-time math position. Hayden Knightstad, part-time mathematics instructor to replace Kovish. And then finally, to Lake, and again, you do have a contract in front of you as well for Ashley Rush for special education at her primary school as well. So those would be the proposed individual teaching contracts to be recommended to the board for later recommendation. And then finally, the recommendation for Steve Newcomer to become our next intermediate school principal. And you'll see his proposed individual administrative contract for that too as well. So just looking for motions to approve the letters of resignation as presented for the individuals, the individual teaching contracts as presented. And then finally, the administrative contract for Steve Newcomer as presented.
I will be approved the letter that Brian made.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those ayes, same side. Motion passes.
And then just looking for a motion to approve the individual teaching contracts for Hayden Knightstad, Megan Halback, Amy Currie, Kristen Barth, Josh Much, Tricia Burby, Joanne Kovish, and Lacey Ritzka as presented.
I move to.
I vote aye.
Go ahead, Dean. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the individual teaching contracts as recommended by the administrator. Any discussion? Ron, where does this leave us as a district-wide for open positions?
Sure, we have, we did hire up one full-time instructional assistant today as well. That letter will be coming to the board in July. And then we have three opening IA positions right now. We have a 4K IA position. We have an early childhood instructional assistant position and then a 5K instructional position all part-time that are still open and they are on weekends. So.
Any other discussion or questions for Ron? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those ayes, same side. Motion carries.
The administration has recommended the board make a motion to approve the individual administrative contract for Steve Newcomer as presented.
I'll lay that motion, the vote being booked up and then we'll be forward.
I second with discussion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
I know, Ron, that we had parents surveys that went out a couple of months prior, four weeks prior. And looking at your email sent out for public release, if you can just explain to whoever's watching and whoever's here how we base our decisions. Should hire compared to why we hired him as you put in your statements on the email. Okay, you highlighted, you know, the reasons.
Oh, highlighted is knowledge.
Demonstrative professional development staff. But you really didn't touch on anything in any of that as far as the community and I'd say a lot of staff had concerns about.
Um, I guess what we did was is I took the principal profile. We had attributes. The attributes were outlined in that survey that we sent to our parents and the community and staff. We gathered that information about what attributes they were looking for. From there, the board also did have a profile of the new principal that they were desiring. And that is what I highlighted each one of those attributes as it relates to the attribute. And it just pulled something out about what Steve brought to the table to fulfill that, I'm sorry, the profile from that standpoint. The way, when we got together in closed session to discuss what the process was going to be, the recommendation was to survey our families about the key attributes about what we wanted, which did occur. And we gathered approximately 169, 163 responses for that, from that survey. 28 or 30 of them came from our staff and then the rest was from our community and or families. Then the board did talk in closed session about what process. So we found out what we were gonna do is we were going to screen applicants and then bring finalist applicants forward to showcase and to gather feedback from our families, from our staff, and then ultimately from the Board of Education and administrative team as well. So we did ask for feedback from each one of those presentations. And there were 16 responses from the individuals who were here for the parent side, parent and community. 16 people gave us feedback. And from the staff, we also asked for their feedback. And there was 11 individuals from our staff who gave us feedback too as well. So the board was shared that feedback as part of the recommendation and part of the process. And about a discussion that occurred about what are each one of the stakeholder groups, whether it be the family stakeholder group, the staff stakeholder group, the administrative team stakeholder group, as well as the Board of Education stakeholder group too as well. So that was our process of what we did. We did gather feedback. We only talked about the statistics of that were gathered. Sure. We did ask each of the groups if they, again, we asked them if each individual, two question based for each. The individual would be a, I don't know what the first one was, a bad, bad fit, a good principal or a great principal. Those were the rating from one to three that we asked. And we asked them on each of the candidates. And then at the very end, we did ask them to rank the candidates one or two about how they would, they would like their, from that standpoint, two as well. So that was the information that was collected from that as well. And what I can say is, again, I don't have the statistics in front of me, but I believe 11 out of 16 thought Steve Newcomer would be a good or a great principal and from the families. And then 13 out of 16 thought Jason Wachowski would be a good or a great principal. And the parents' information was, you know, they made it rank Jason Wachowski as a candidate of Steve Newcomer. From the data that was collected.
And just to clarify for anybody watching or in the audience, we did skip one very important step in the process. We held a round one interview with candidates. And then we elected to bring two candidates in for a final interview with the board, with staff, and with the community members. I would also note, there were five staff members. I think I counted five.
Five or six.
Five or six staff members volunteered their time on, for the first round interviews and their time for final interviews with the staff. So the first round of interview saw 17 individuals from various groups, administrative team, support staff, teaching, and the Board of Education. So. And the questions that we asked in round one and round two, and I'm speaking of kind of administrative and board, those were developed around those key attributes that we identified. Yeah, and the second round, we looked at the candidates that we brought back in for the second round. And we drilled deeper into questions that may have been asked in round one and/or questions that we had further, wanted further answers on or further detail on as far as skill sets that they might have. So there were some questions in that second round interview that maybe both candidates got. But then there are also questions that were specific to those candidates and how they may have answered questions in the first round. So that we could really drill down into knowledge base and character and, you know, how they operate as leaders educationally. And I did, all references were checked too ahead of that final night, or final night of the interviews. And that was about an hour for each candidate. For reference checks. So that was our process, as well as some information that was collected as well. And the staff, it was split six, five. Six, five, Jason, and then six arrived there. Any other discussion?
I just need to abstain from the vote. This is the time to quit.
Just, yeah, this didn't just quit the vote.
So I just need to abstain because we know Steve outside of the normal public or whatever. But I would say that I recommend him and he would be good for our school. So to recommend him, but so it's nothing, my vote has nothing to do with my decision of do you give or bad it, is that?
True, personal question.
For your question.
So we have a motion and a second.
Can I ask for a roll call for this?
Sure. Dean, do you, are you?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Dean?
I vote aye for adding Steve Newcomer to be our intermediate principal.
Okay, Troy, Lynn.
Yep. I vote no.
Okay, Andrew, I vote aye. So the motion carries.
Okay, finally underneath for the administrative report, we have staff recognition. And again, we have, would like to highlight three individuals that are kind of the face of our schools and some of the first people that they see. Again, a huge thank you to our administrative assistants. And again, like it says, their receptionists, their nurses, their counselors, problem solvers. They're the dumping ground, you know, when a parent might be a little bit upset too. And they're also the collector of health information that is required. So why, you know, they're kind of testering to people too as well. So, but a big thank you to Melissa Smith, Tiny Coke, and Jen Sesbeck as well too. So thank you very, very much as well. So thank you.
No, she missed her option.
That's right.
Okay, so moving on to committee reports. Looks like Policy Committee.
Policy Committee, yep. So a big thank you to Troy and Lindsay. We've been very busy as well. And a big thank you to Maria as well, who we were, we were asked to create some policies. And again, we're not going to go through each one of them. Again, a little bit later, the board will have a chance to, you know, discuss anything as well. But you'll see eight different policies that have been created. Again, the creation of those have been from other school districts, Neola, WASB. But then ultimately too with a lot of direction, there is some Mertonization due to that as well as through some, through our discussions and making sure we've got some things into play there too as well. Again, the first reading of those policies will be moved forward later in the agenda. And then we also talked about some employees and some continued employee handbook ideas. Ultimately, when those policies are developed, the request has been placed into the employee handbook as well. Again, we can reference them underneath section three, just to make sure that all individuals are really concerned. There are some things that are gonna be different, particularly with the instructional materials, policies and things like that. That, again, just really outlines and really clear guidelines as we take a look at materials, technology, moving forward too as well. So again, just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, that we're clear in our communications to our staff about what the, the policies are stating too as well. And it was also brought into about a possibly, you know, quiz on either some of the new changes to the employee handbook and some of the policies that are being put into, again, very similar to what some of our blood or pathogen training might be and some of our map recording updates and stuff like that as well. And that's stuff that we can finalize in July as we take a look at finalizing those policies and moving forward and placing them into that handbook. Because again, it would be an amended handbook as we move forward with those policies and that would occur in July as well. So, and then there's just was some, some conversation around staff dress code and about being clear about what some examples might be that are not acceptable for some dress codes. Outside, obviously, there's some caveats to the, you know, when we talk about athletic shorts. Well, our gym teachers and our physical education teachers, that's, we want them comfortable to avoid any workplace safety issues too as well. So just some discussion to get there. That would be for some amendments moving forward in July. So. Lindsay, Troy, I think that's kind of highlights the big level.
Yeah.
Oh, and then we also reviewed the student and family handbook. So that was also discussed. And again, the families as well as staff. Everybody can see the proposed changes that are in yellow for those. Yeah, those would be moved forward for a final approval in July. That's all I got. Okay.
So we're out of new business.
So we did have a, Phil Spindler did resign his board position. And now the board is tasked with determining what are the next steps in filling that vacancy. So in the board package, we'll find Board Policy 1009, which gives the board four different options on how to proceed. First of all, all of these proceedings and any types of discussions about this will occur in an open session, regardless of what direction the board would like to take. None of this qualifies for a closed session. So the four options they have is appoint the runner-up from the last election, accept nominations from board members to nominate individuals, and then either at the will of the board to use an interview process, they can request letters of interest from the public and then move forward with the interview process if they wish. Or they can, you guys can appoint a former board member to fill that seat too as well. The board does have 60 days, so it would be until approximately August 14th is when we would have to fill the seats. So that would happen at, you know, at a board meeting. We got the formal board meeting to accept the votes of office for that to occur.
So I'm sure we'll just have a ton of interest.
For this. It's just one of those.
My analyst dropped.
Really, my worst job, yeah, this last, last election, Troy, you know, ran unopposed.
Yeah.
There wasn't any interest from that standpoint. But so again, just kind of turn it over to the board about what they're, they're thinking. And again, whatever you guys want to direct the administration to do, we certainly can do that.
I'll make a motion that we use procedure C, we request letters of interest from the public, and then use an interview project.
I'll say it there. So we have a motion and a second. We'll open it up for discussion.
So run B versus C. How, what's the timeline on those two?
They would be the same. B would be, either one, we would set a meeting date. Again, unless we wanted to determine it now, we certainly could. Or then for B, board members have to nominate individuals. Do that. If you do collect letters of interest per the motion, we would set a timeframe, say, you know, seven, ten days, ten days, whatever the board wishes to do. And the interest would go to the clerk. Again, they would be dropped off at district offices addressed to the clerk. And then ultimately, we would set interview night or interview time. Again, all done in open session where the board then would interview the individuals who have made the request of interest of the board, the board lists from interview process and then decides his right to replace Phil.
So we can have a board member by the August.
You can have by August, but if you wanted to, you could also have, it's a little quick turnaround when we start talking about July eighteenth. It's a pretty quick turnaround with that too.
Yeah.
But we could do that.
We could, if, if, again, the board can set any timeframe that they would like. So if we wanted to kind of back it up and we could interview at, you know, we have a meeting on July eighteenth at six o'clock. If we wanted to set interviews, say you have, you know, thirty minute interviews and you could do it the night of, or the afternoon of the, the eighteenth. So you want to start at four o'clock, you could do four interviews, four half hour interviews. And then make a decision that you need as well if you wanted to. Because today is the twenty, that would be. About two weeks of letters of interest and you set the interview day of the eighteenth. That's what we wanted to do. Again, it's the will of the board. That would be, you know, pretty aggressive, but it can happen. About four days. Yes, I mean, the board is used to meeting at five o'clock on Mondays at this time. That's the will of the board. Any more discussion?
Well, I mean, streamlining it with the motion or, or streamlining it in a process?
In a process.
I mean, I guess that's.
I have a quick question, I guess. So the three of us, I know we have Dean. But does Dean count if he leaves over the phone? So what happens if one of us leave?
Okay.
Yep.
So he's still, okay.
Dean's phone, he had a phone, Dean would qualify. Or no?
Yes. I'm not sure if one of us is going to be here.
And, and the interviews, we could, we would do them soon. So we could actually see that. We did, yeah, or we did, we did set that up anyway you would like to. We can control, we can control that process.
I got one more question. So what is the benefit of C versus D or D or the other? Like is, do most boards do a nomination? Does the Arrowhead just do a nomination thing? So, or is it, is there a reason why? I just don't know about boards.
Say it's. Troy, maybe you know more about this. Arrowhead did choose C or C option and took letters of interest and then interviewed the applicants.
Correct.
Yep, that is what they did. And it talked to.
It doesn't have the path over the year with the letters of interest.
Yep.
And then they brought board members in and interviewed them. They, they brought them all in. Very, very, you know, very brief interview. But Arrowhead did it because they'd already made their selection, what we experienced. But so we just, you know, we wouldn't have that a half an hour. We could.
The.
I think we just turned it up. Wouldn't see how many we, how many letters of interest we have.
The only other experience I know I have with this Dean, our past practice, back in two thousand and eleven, we had a resignation and then they went to option A, a runner up. Where the Dean, you know, it was Dean, Dean fulfilled A and D. So that they just appointed Dean in July and then they. So what I would say is, is we can, for future meetings and agenda items, I think we can discuss and finalize timeframe in there because that means there will be a future agenda item on a board meeting. So we can discuss that at that time. Okay, so we, so we have a motion for C to request letters of interest from the public and/or use an interview process. We have a second for that. Any further discussion?
Can we add that we would have a person hired or fill the position by July meeting?
We could, but, but it depends if we even get people interested.
I think there's people, or there's a couple that have been shallow. I expect that to be stopped.
Again, I think we're.
Yeah.
What Ron says, we said that at the end of the, or a meeting where we.
Future meetings and agenda items.
I thought I meant for next week, because I'm like, that would be a lot.
No, 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 no. Future meetings and agenda items. That's when we can take a look and say, hey, we're going to do it on this date. We're going to have interviews on this date, which then means we just back up the ten days of letter of interest. And then a future board member will have to actually. Well, you can actually, I have to double check, but I do believe once you approve, you can approve them at the next board meeting, which if you go ahead of the evening, July special, you get, you have to do a special. Correct, you'd have a meeting right after that. You got an action item to appoint the new board member. And then ultimately, the votes of office can be taken in the six o'clock meeting as well too. So, so it can happen. Lindsay, if you want it to happen, get this board member on July eighteenth and serve.
We only have like ten, I think we wait, nine or ten.
Yeah, because it's a short term, it's only three months.
So that's supposed to make it worth it for the person that is going to be out.
We will talk about that here.
And just double check all that.
Yep, yep.
Yep, I'll double check that.
The next board meeting, so next, so we've got just a. Yep, I'll double check that. Yep.
So we have a motion and a second, bad discussion. All those in favor of C, request letters of interest from the public and/or use an interview process, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, that motion passes.
School fees. So at the last Business Committee, Finance Committee meeting, we did set to make some recommendations for school fees. And again, those are all listed in the board packet. There is a five dollar increase at intermediate school just per the academic programming that we're going to be doing next year. As well as you'll also see a recommendation, recommendation for lunch prices as well. It'll be back to pre pandemic levels too as well. So the administration and the finance committee are recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three school fees of lunch prices as presented.
I make a motion. Yes, stated. Did I get it? Here we have a motion and second, discussion. Ron, I noticed there's also before the lunch fee proposal, there's also a discussion about chrome, but that was not in the recommendation. Is that just, or is that included?
That's included in the relative student fee. It's included in the student fee. And we would include that in the student.
Okay, correct.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. Yeah, we wouldn't call it front book.
Okay, I didn't, okay. I just wanted to make sure we're clear.
Yeah.
Okay.
It did go down.
All right. Special. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, this is our second reading, next item is our second reading of our employee handbook. Again, we will be looking at possibly amending it next month. Employee handbook can be amended at any time. But the Policy Committee did meet back in May. Again, we did a first reading in, at the May board meeting as well. And again, all the documented changes are right there from a proposed idea. Again, if the board does move forward, that would be great. Handbook inserting all that, which. Go for employee acknowledgement set. Right when the new starts, which is July first. So, because the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three employee handbook as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
And basically what this poses is just changing a lot of dates, things as there.
No, we've got, we do have some, some items that we would like to change. One of them is focused around educator effectiveness. That's probably the biggest one. And again, when we did present that last month, Maria did, and we did bring that to our leadership teams and things like that. So a little bit of change in framework from educator effectiveness. And then there's just some, some cleanup of some things, but for the most part, educator effectiveness is the, the main change there.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Student staff calendar. Very sorry, we missed, out of a lot of eyes were on this, May thirty first. So instead of, we chockle because we're like, how many dozens of people missed this, but we did. So ultimately, we, the last day of school, we, on Wednesday, Wednesday, June seventh, instead of Thursday, June eighth. So again, since the board did approve the last calendar, we're just going to come back and amend it. So the administration recommends the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three student staff calendar as presented.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three staff and student calendar as presented. All right, the motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I did have a question. So the holiday concerts are on there, which is great, but is there a reason like the band, it's like that? Is there, is there a reason why we don't put those on there?
Um, the, the, the big one is, I mean, we did want to put all of the concert dates on there. The big one, we just wanted to make sure was the, the holiday concert, because those are our most attended. We do have those dates already set ahead of time as well. We certainly can. Yep.
Just so they're planning.
Sure. If I can talk to our music department, because we are going to be having a primary school spring concert as well next year.
Especially if they're set, might as well share it.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next item is to our teacher contracts for next year. And we will see a full, full list of the teacher contracts when we are moving forward to the board. Full time contracts are governed by one eighteen twenty-two. And those, if they have not been renewed per those statutes in that timeframe, they are rolled forward. So you'll see our list of teacher contracts, we are recommending both full and part time. So the administration recommends the board approve the twenty-two, twenty-three teacher contracts as presented.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three teachers contract as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ron is the one who gave us a copy of that, including other, we.
We did that one. Yeah, we did that one. Yeah, I just. New contracts, we, we do differently than it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next on it is administrative contracts. So we have two administrative contracts that have expired, April Farley and Lori Larson. We would, so the district administrator is recommending the board approve the administrative contracts for April Farley and Lori Larson, or Bill Larson as presented.
Make a motion to approve the administrative contracts for April Farley and Lori Yolobarson as presented. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Brad's April.
Glad to be here, Brad, to hear that.
And then also, Ron, next on the agenda is administrative salaries. We've set our support staff, we've set our teaching staff. And you'll see the administrative salaries that were not approved on the new contract. And that would be for Ron Russ, Maria Kacharsky, and Becca Stein. So the administration recommends the board make a motion to approve the administrative salaries for twenty-two, twenty-three as presented.
Make a motion to approve the administration salaries from twenty-three, twenty-four as presented. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Policy review. So first draft review of board policies. Again, you will see eight different policies there. Just again, this is the first draft. Just looking for any feedback or any comments from the, the board regarding these policies or any questions?
Few questions. One more of a hundred thousand foot view question. When we develop policies, do we have our counsel attorney review of said policies prior to the board viewing those policies and, right, and potentially taking action?
They will be reviewed after today's. We were just waiting for any feedback. Yes, we will get those to WASB.
Okay.
To, for, for just the final scrub and final review of those.
Correct.
Yeah. Yes, we do that after the first reading.
Yeah, just, if you wanted to understand protocol.
Yeah.
Whether or not an attorney reviews these or not. Second question to be, for the board or for the policy committees. Are these all existing policies that we're just amending them or are these all brand new policies?
A is all right.
Okay.
That's we have, we've never had current, we've never had current policies. No, not how we developed that. No, no. I believe E is new.
Okay. Everything else?
F is, F is, F is new, that is a policy. F, G, and H are all new policies as well.
C would be new?
Go ahead.
Yep.
They're very lucky to have Maria. She did a lot of work living in different districts, living in their policies and then entered to try. I know all these things about all of those reports.
I did a report.
But the two of them, I just was amazed by all the.
So Maria, since you're here.
Yeah.
Broadly on kind of that A, B, and C, I'll just maybe D. Broadly, as I read those. It, it's codifying the process we're going to undertake as a district to review curriculum, review instructional material, review ancillary materials that teachers and staff may want to utilize within the classroom. Is that broadly what I'm understanding?
Yes. Yes. I mean, very broadly, big view, right? We did have a process. So what would be a very typical? We did have a process, so what would be a very typical process that most school districts and boards would use to develop curriculum and to instruct, and to select instructional materials that align to that work? Yes. And ed tech would be a relatively new thing. I think after the pandemic, a lot of schools and teachers were using online resources and materials. Some of them may or may not have been approved through a formal process that teachers would be of brought in the classroom. So of what we would call supplemental material.
Okay.
So just putting a process for that, because gym, ultimately, we're responsible for COPA, FERPA, and COPA logs relating to child data security and what we can or cannot share with certain vendors. So all of that online stuff really should be reviewed and through a process, so we can ensure that we're protecting our data and our privacy of our students. So it, the ed tech policy specifically would be very new here.
Yeah.
Um, just, we had had kind of an informal process, um, when someone would, but we just want to solidify that. So our teaching staff may not understand the laws behind that, but we certainly do want to make sure that we're putting them in the best position possible.
Okay. And one of these, I mean, sorry that I can't remember which one it was. There, there was a, uh, clicked on one of them, there were four documents linked to it. And then one of the documents was a, uh, for lack of a better term, a, I don't agree here with, with this. And this is why I don't agree with it, I'd like you to re-review.
Yeah.
Is that for parents? Is that for staff?
I mean, in the community.
Community, okay, so that's parents, community, not staff.
Right, for the most part, staff is picking up the materials, right? Because like in social studies, you know, we have staff pick out, rate, view vendors and have a lot to say about what they select. So if that isn't, you know, um, if a staff member would have a concern about something, certainly I would entertain if they have a problem with something that they're seeing. But in most parts, our staff is who's selecting the materials. So it's really the public, the transparent part.
Yeah.
If someone, um, has a specific concern about something that the district has approved and utilized. Yeah, and it made like the little form there, so you see it.
I thought it was, it was a nice form, it went through step by step. You know, to allow folks to identify something that they didn't like, explain why they didn't like it. And then there was a formal process that we would go through as a district to review, along with, um, steps that, you know, uh, appeal steps, I guess, right?
Absolutely.
Parents could go through to further escalate a, uh, concern.
Correct.
That's a good thing.
So if anything else, if you have any feedback, uh, Dean or Andrew, as we start to think about this. But after this, we look forward this to legal counsel for scrub, and then, uh, in July, we'll bring it for approval. That's the vote of war.
Okay.
We did use legal, like, approved kind of things already to start off, just, uh, be transparent about that, Maria just didn't handwrite all of that. I know what companies are and where it goes.
Troy did. Dean Roy's. Okay. Uh, next up on the business, Ron? Yep, so it looks like a creation of a new board committee. Uh, Troy mentioned this as a, a agenda topic at the May board meeting. Again, just, uh, Troy, I'll have to turn it over to you, and it's just a, a new committee, possibly being formed to kind of oversee some things in the district.
This is a committee that we really don't have, a lot of other boards do have a HR committee. Speaking to a lot of staff, I think it's, would be a good add, just another, another area for staff to reach out to. We've been talking about doing climate control surveys, uh, we're doing exit interviews now, so. We're here for exit interviews told at the HR. The climate survey, if we possibly do them.
Let me take that with that kit, just for the sake of doing it. What stops a teacher from just coming to the, the board? General, coming to us, of any one of us.
Nothing's stopping them right now.
Yeah. So we stay a few.
The committee too also, I feel like it shows our community of our staff that we support them, and sometimes it could be a committee from one of us that you don't know us, but you know, there's this committee.
I do, I was just asking in that, like, from the great board work, for the sake of, like.
Maybe for us, but if for them, why would it?
And that kind of pol- policy at HR would probably overlap, because it's a lot of employee issues also at work, so it would work out again. You agree with that? We wouldn't be doing any disciplinary actions, though. All right, here I think it was just a point that, that could not be watched.
It's no good, right? Yeah, we have, there's four policies that guide how that, that would occur. Formal complaint, probably, and it's not, it wouldn't be part of our complaint process unless that was something that was inserted. Um, it wouldn't be part of the, the grievance process that outlined in, uh, state statutes too as well about what's required, so.
So would you envision as a secondary, uh, goal of the, or, or job of the HR committee? Would also review and discuss those exit interviews as well? So it would be more, it'd be, so it'd be staff, kind of more of a global HR, and then there'd also be kind of that component of like, we've got exit interviews and looking at culture, climate.
Give some data.
Yeah, we need data.
Okay, and then that committee would report to the board, period, like, full board, period.
And I, or that committee would probably, that person would do after.
Correct, and yeah, it would, it'd be up to the, the personnel committee about what the interest of the district administrator would be, or anything. Be welcomed into, I mean, it's a public meeting, ultimately, it's everything committee. And again, this would not be meeting in closed session or anything else like that to review the information that we're pleased to apply to as well, so.
Okay, so then that brings up another question. What happens if? So in HR, any committee meeting would have to be an open meeting to the public. Correct, it'd be posted like a normal student achievement, or finance committee meeting, and, and members of the public can come to that. What happens if you have a staff member that came? And you started talking about personnel, you just shut down and say, we, we can't, it's against our board policy, it's school policy to talk about. That's how that would happen.
Correct, yeah, yeah, correct. And again, it's a, it's a, it's a policy meeting, which is then ultimately run between, you know, the policy, the, the committee itself. Uh, the committee chair, we would assign them, but the, the committee itself would have to say, we're really sorry, just like the recommendations to be heard. Again, there'd have to be really strict agenda, and they're looking at broad.
Okay, I, I just, I just wanted to make sure that
Yep.
that was stated upfront, that this isn't gonna be a forum, or it can't be a forum where personnel issues and potential are discussed, because we obviously don't do that in a normal board meeting.
Correct. And those would have to be routed to the proper channel, again, going back to complaint policies and ultimately, the chairman. You got it. My only, my only two cents to Troy's would be, instead of HR, it's often referred to as personnel.
Yeah.
Personnel, yeah, personnel, it's a personnel committee. And, uh, it does bridge well nicely with personnel and policy, because ultimately, policy drives personnel. And, uh, with, with exit interviews, you get collecting data, and the, the board's discussions about climate surveys, reception surveys, would all then be filtered through there, processed with them, and then presented to the full board, just like a finance committee or a policy committee.
And my question is, what? What would the HR committee make for?
We can be go over climate surveys, the, the exit surveys. If we, uh, have staff, have enough staff, we can converse about that. From the administration, if we need to.
I. Because this, uh, this, it, it seems to me there's a lot of micromanaging, and, uh, that worries me. You know, staff issues should be common protocol, through their supervisors, and, uh, I, I really don't know what the, what we, what you'd actually be for. You know, like this exit interview, they, that's gonna be something that, uh, I would give the whole board, be wanting to discuss, you discuss that in, uh, in the whole concession of the regular board meeting. I, I just don't know where there'd be a purpose for the HR committee, because human resources are, some of it channels through April, right? Some of it channels through you, Ron, and some of it goes through the direct supervisor.
Who do you think is micromanaging, the administration staff or all the staff?
It'd be we see micromanaging the, the creative staff.
Uh, can I ask one more question? So what's the difference of like a couple of years ago, Katie and I think it was Tools, when they did the surveying of all the teachers and everything? What was that, they just started a committee, or how, what was that?
That, that was run through our strategic planning committee, that was workforce development. So, and they were, they were the two chairs on that committee, uh, as in a branch from the strategic plan, uh, from that standpoint. And part of the strategic planning work, when they met, they said, hey, let's, let's have this team take a look at and dive deeper into the, it was culture and climate. Uh, we used the general set, well, top workplaces information. And then after they did that, then that team, that team decided at the time they wanted to meet with similar demographic employees, whether teachers between, you know, one in grade, your, your one and three, things like that too. So, and that was from the strategic plan, they were focusing around climate, culture, and information that was collected from a staff climate and culture survey.
So, just that mentioned here. But, um, I would challenge that we had this once, and now we currently don't have it in our system, or we don't have a place to do for our staff members. So is there, are we gonna do a strategic plan in the future?
Yeah, we're up for a strategic plan this upcoming year. So we'll be, if, if in fact the board wanted to do any climate and culture surveys of either our parents, staff, uh, or students, or whatever it may be, uh, again, that can be directed either, or led through the strategic planning process too as well. Through community engagement, or workforce development, or workforce engagement too as well. I think you guys are talking about, you know, information, data, taking a look at climate survey, because the one piece is very good point that Andrew brought up is as if, you know, Troy, you're on the personnel committee, so I'm gonna bring you my personnel issue. That is not what this committee would be for at all. It would be for very high, bigger, high-level things, but it cannot be for individuals, grievances, concerns, because we do have a process and protocol for that too as well. That would be super important.
So what I, what I have kind of written down, it's the goal of this personnel committee would be use broad terms here. Surveys, exit interviews, kind of culture discussions, all for climate discussions. Fair, yeah, fair, exactly. Okay, and, and then I wrote down, so again, no personnel issue discussion, because there's other channels, appropriate channels. It's right channels, but as long as they follow.
Yep. Those are my notes to make.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on it?
There's no motion, okay.
That's what I had.
I'll make a motion for a, what you call it, personnel.
Personnel committee.
Personnel committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Okay, so now we're talking about something that technically we've had in place in the past, personnel committee, because we, uh, personnel committee is the one that does the, the, uh, negotiation, is this?
That's the negotiations committee.
This would be a new committee.
So they made, they made a motion for a, a new personnel committee.
Okay, aye. The one I brought up, I'm gonna use a restart, I 'cause I said that just as a head layer, that I don't, any justice having. Personnel committee, uh, we've had that in the past, we just haven't, uh, so, I did agree with the personnel.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. For the formation of a new personnel committee. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This can work out.
Yeah, yeah.
We guess, we guess it's gonna be you two on.
Yeah. Well, by personnel, I think, by personnel policy. Okay. All right, uh, next on the list is our occupational therapy contract with Erica Sisada. Um, in the past, we made this a teaching contract, uh, our recommendation is to move it more to available hours, just like our, uh, physical therapist, uh, would be as well, and, uh, we are recommending Erica Sisada. Um, Erica has over twenty years of school-based educational occupational therapy. Uh, most recently, she checked with the Peewauckie School District. Yeah, so you'll see her proposed, uh, contract agreement, again, it's a, it's a, kind of an independent contractor agreement. Uh, not a teacher contract like it has in the past. So, um, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the 2022, 23 occupational therapy contract with Erica Sisada as presented.
I will move.
Sorry. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
This would get, she would get a 1099 route, right?
No, she would be compensated through the district payroll. It's just instead of a contract where, you know, say you make fifty thousand dollars for the entire school year, it's billable hours. So she's being compensated for time actually worked.
And would we have that scheduled filled with her in advance for the needs of our students?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep, that is, that is, that is the deal, that we would set, set her hours with us.
Okay.
Uh, based on the needs and the schedule that is decided.
Correct, yeah, and I know this is getting into the weeds a little bit, but how, how and when do we know that to communicate with her, that she doesn't overbook herself, so how, how do we protect our students and our?
Yep. Um, I do believe that schedule is ninety percent set already. With, between Lori and Erica, with that too as well. So, um, need to answer your question too, as well, the 1099 route, uh, when we ran this through our attorney. Bob Butler recommended us go this route compared to, uh, the 1099 contractor route.
And what was the rationale of that?
Uh, his rationale was, uh, from a, uh, first of all, this, uh, Erica, this would have been LLC for her, and it was the first, uh, we would have been the first client, uh, which our, our legal team, again, without getting too far in the weeds, it's around, this is not recommended from a legal standpoint to be for a school district to enter into an LLC, or an agreement with an LLC for, and be the first client of that LLC. Um, and then Bob just wanted, Bob thought it'd be a lot cleaner, not only for payroll, but for IRS purposes, about who's paying what and taxes and things, uh, and that would lead him to this recommendation. So I did send him basically the independent contractor, contract, and he ripped it apart.
Okay, so we would act, we'd be paying her, uh, her portion of, uh, some money back to.
We would be paying our, the employer portion of. We would be paying our, the employer portion of, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And the non-contract, is it?
Yes. It's different than what we've done in the past.
What?
It's different than what we've done in the past, again, because we felt that from an occupational therapy standpoint, again, we just wanted to go billable hours compared to all of the professional development, because it's so unique. I guess just wanted to kind of go this route, just like we would with physical therapy, there are unique niches. As well as definite part of hearing too as well.
So. I. I still don't understand where Bob's coming from, but that. You know, I, I look at, if you're, if you're going out on your own. Then, you know, and getting a healthy reimbursement. They, we take some of the risks too, you know. But. We would be paying, work with county or also, correct?
We would anyway. Yep. Correct.
We would be?
We would. Yes, yes, we are. We are.
I would. That's why we have a committee, but it's, it's, I'd say the name.
It, it wasn't our first direction.
What?
It wasn't the first recommendation. So, the first recommendation was contracted service. And then this is where Bob recommended.
Okay. Oh, you know.
Okay, we have a motion. All right, we have a motion, a second, and discussions, any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
I get the poll back once, the third.
Okay, do we notice? Motion carries though.
Yeah.
All right, facility plan. So, this is the second reading of a updated facility plan. Again, this is something that is, that's available and can be amended at any time. But again, we have gone through and the, the facility team met. Again, the new plan was created to kind of sketch out some of the big projects that are upcoming for the district. It can be changed at any time. So, this is ultimately for Fund 46 and also some direction too. So, the administration recommends the board make a motion to approve the updated 2022 to 2032 10-year facility plan as presented.
So.
I will move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Ron, just big picture, the dollar figures that are in here. Are those placeholders based upon past experience? And taking into the general inflationary bubble we're in right now, is that?
They're ultimately placeholders.
Okay.
Ultimately placeholders. The, the, the one piece that is probably, like, the fire alarm system is probably the most up to date. And they said, Ron, I know you're not doing it for a year, but, you know, two years down the road, this is what you would probably inflate that price.
Okay.
But yes, very broad, very round numbers.
Okay, and then am I just imagining this or are there two intermediate school academic wing remodel in 23, 24, and 24, and 25?
Yes, we would do it in phases.
Takes, in Fund 46. We have a balance in there?
We've eaten 50,000 pounds.
Be 50 today.
And again, we'll, April just had the tentative audit. And we're going to be finalizing some things and ultimately hopefully we'll be bringing to the board some surplus that we would be recommending to place at the Fund 46 in July.
Maybe we can highlight some things here. Remodel. Player system here and framework. In your committee meeting, is there anything that is like we need immediately or is this, we're good for a few more years scenario? Based, based on how it's laid out?
I, I, I think our committee would say, yes, okay, yeah, we're in good shape.
All right.
But if something comes up, we certainly can address that.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the 10-year facility plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Let's start it. First reading of our proposed student handbook. Again, you can, if you have any feedback for the policy team, please let us know that there are, there's questions or feedback right now. Final approval will be moving forward to the July, all right, the July 4th. Yeah.
Okay.
Technology or professional development plan. So, in May, Maria presented to the board the professional development plan. Again, a big thank you to Maria, who helped with that, and our administrative team, as well as the, the leadership teams as well to put this forward. Again, this is a skeleton, the good, our best guess right now for all of our professional development for the next school year. Maybe from Wednesday meetings to before school, professional development, during school, professional development. Forward to come as well. So, again, a very in-depth plan, but can be fluid to meet the needs of our staff. If in fact something would come up, we can certainly pivot to as well. But again, we presented it and again, the administration would recommend the board make a motion to approve the 2022-23 staff professional development and framework as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-23 staff professional development plan framework as presented. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. It's from a course of action. It's a framework. It could change. Does that come back to the board or we're giving discretion to our administrative team?
Just discretion. Yep, yep, the, the. State asks us, requires us, asks us?
Requires us.
Requires us, yeah, we like to use required.
We want to make sure.
To, to at least, to acknowledge that there is a plan in place to develop that. Okay, yep.
Any other discussion or questions for Ron or Maria?
I mean, mainly things that come up over the year, right? Like a workshop comes up, we don't know about it now that we want to send staff to, et cetera.
Correct.
It's not all known, a rough idea.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Technology purchases. Again, every year we ask Jim to kind of take more gas and update what's needed. And at this point, we would like to present to the board for possible approval for three smart panels for, for classrooms, for replacements. Five Uber cams, 28 tablets for our project, Need the Way course, upcoming course, app creator. We need a cart for those and then 10 additional staff probots to replace ones that are no longer supported. You'll see the, the bits that were collected for all of those items. And the total is approximately just over $20,600. So, the administration is recommending the board make a motion to approve the purchase of smart panels, Uber cams, tablets, and tablets with cart and Chromebooks as presented.
I will move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion. This president.
President, he just got creator. Best.
Yeah.
I do believe is.
It'll be our computer science elective, but David Wager's taking two computer science train. And we just didn't know what we put in the explore and what we'll put in the elective. But we do know app creator is one of the two courses. It's very cool. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is on top of the last one, the last one.
Is student, right, this is, the student probots are the in and outs as well as, I think it was 5K first and second grade, we needed to add some?
5K first.
5K.
4K, 5K first.
Yeah. March, yeah, we ordered those early.
Yep. Everything's here.
April, do these. Is this qualified for SIR fund, like SIR spending or do we, you're marking, just, or is this just general budget?
This will be operating.
Okay.
Some of this is just part of normal upkeep, the smart panels and hover cams. Really the, the additional thing this year is those tablets. That would be the one thing that would be out of the ordinary.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sides, sign. Motion carries.
Okay, upcoming meetings.
What do we think about our time frame? All right, so this is where we want to discuss.
This is where we can discuss and set the.
Work our way, we work our way backwards.
What we're going to.
Right, I would, yeah.
Yeah.
Me, all right. So, we set right now and say for the next. Yeah, until July 1st even, that's two weeks to have people express some interest if they have them.
I think it is. You did through July 5th. I, again, it depends if you want, depends what you want to hear.
How? Ron, how would you advertise?
I would, I would put a, again, I don't know what kind of posting it is, but I would publicize it in our, our, our website. We can put it in the newspaper as well, a formal board vacancy notice. And again, I can ask where we were required to put that too as well. Probably have to, we have to put it into our newspaper. We put it in our newspaper, we put it on our website, we put it on our front banner of our website, and we can send it out to all of our families. Is better.
So, we did that. Say we have hundreds of people that want to be part of this. Rattle board that we have. We even have the next week to read all, whatever we ask of. It's been resume or.
It's typically just a letter of interest, a letter of interest.
Put it out and then July 11th, maybe have a special meeting, a big one, if we're in a case meeting.
How about the 18? We don't have a whole session scheduled now, right? Or?
I don't, I don't have any plans before the board meeting.
So, that's it, you got four, we start at five o'clock. You got two, you start at 5:30. And, and it's better to meeting and then. And then we'd have an action item in the, in the second meeting, in the, during the board meeting.
I'm sorry, that is.
So, he wants to, he wants to, I'm sorry, I was having this side. He wants to say it's less to do, I think. The night before, he wants to do it right before the July 18th board meeting. And set the time accordingly to how many applicants you have. Dean is proposing a 15-minute interview, I think Dean, if I understood you properly.
Then I would recommend we change the start time of the 18th to 7:00, just in case. That's up to me.
It should be a light meeting, right? Yes, it's a real light meeting. Yeah, academic standards declaration and hopefully Fund 46 action.
So, we have, we have a number of first reads, those will come back.
It's a lightning, it really is.
So, even if we started at 7:00.
7:00.
Okay. And that gives us, then that gives us between, let's just, for argument's sake, between 5:00 and 7:00. Yet we have a whole bunch of interviews.
I just, it does, it gives you a lot more options.
I'd rather have some flexibility to do it before the meeting. And we could, I mean, and let's, okay, let's say we only get three people. We, we could, instead of starting at 5:00, we start at 6:00. You interview the three before 6:00 and then the board meeting starts at 7:00.
Correct.
So, you could flex it depending on the level of interest.
Yep. Because there will have to be board discussion after that. And that can happen in that special meeting. I would regret, again, well, to Troy's comment before, run it by Bob Butler. But I would envision us having interviews, deliberations, action before we go at 7:00.
Yes.
Yep, to give us plenty of time, some of their way there too. So, is it 7:00 o'clock if we weren't at the community forum? And maybe do it, but it is likely.
How much time, how much time do you get to last for deliberating?
I'm sorry, Dean.
How much time do you get on last for deliberation? You got, you got a public in front of you and you've got a couple candidates. You think there's going to be a lot of discussions?
I would probably 15, 20 minutes. And if it's done early, then we wait till 7:00 o'clock to roll.
Yes, I, I don't. Given from past history. I don't think we're going to get a lot of candidates. And, because this is all an open session. I don't, you know, I, I can't believe we're going to be having discussions going back and forth about candidates that are sitting in front of us.
Oh, and it, the candidates are most likely to be asked to leave.
Can't do that. This is going to be all an open session.
I mean, they can be asked to leave.
Well, they do, but they can stay in there one at a time. Because if, they're going to know the questions that are going to be asked. Each candidate was asked the same question. I can, I can determine process, we can get that process done.
I, I did it, I interviewed one at Earlhead. And, and this is how they, how they did it. They had you commit to down in front of the law, I think there were five candidates when I went in. You. The candidates made a statement. And then. They voted on all five of them. And then in front of, whereas. If, you know, let's say there's. Seven board members and five, five candidates. They needed to have, somebody get four. Vote. In order to be, to get the position. So, if, let's say the votes got split, two, two. One, one, one. So, they eliminate the people with one vote. And then they have another vote on the two, two. So, people, and then. They get their majority that way. That's where Earlhead did it in the past when I was there. But did they ask? Did they ask any questions at all? No. Did they?
Why couldn't we develop a list of questions ahead of time and ask them to prepare a written statement based on three questions? You know, because it worked.
What, what Earlhead did is the applicants had five minutes to introduce themselves, tell themselves about. And so, and then they were asked a series of five questions. And so, and then they were asked a series of five questions. And that's, right, 1-1.
Ron, just saying, in order to avoid that, you just give them the questions. Have to be part of their, because everybody's going to have different answers. Be ready. Or not, but I mean, I think back to the form that I had to do, and I think we all have the different, different ways of answering the questions that were posed to us.
Maybe we don't have any policy as far as. This is all, we will. And then as long as it's not a deal. Policy.
Yep.
So we're talking about as far as. Do that. So you have Arrowhead's questions. He shared that. No, 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 I mean, ultimately, we would have to create, and that's really where, you know, create the questions. Maybe you guys can submit questions to me, and then ultimately. So have the two as well. Five minutes. We're not sure. If they ask, we ask questions. If we wanted to work backwards, so we're going to do this on the 9th, the 18th, I just was talking to Jen about our newspaper posting. We will get this to the newspaper on Wednesday, the 22nd. It will then be posted in the paper on the 20th. Okay, so we get it a week ahead of time from that standpoint, so we'll push it out, you know, right away, I can push this out Tuesday, Wednesday, I have to create the vacancy, create the posting for it. But, so let's say Wednesday goes public, the 29th, Wednesday, the 22nd, it goes public.
Okay.
29th is in the newspaper, I would probably wait at least a week after that, or 16th. Okay, to, to, so we would, so we would collect letters of interest through 3 o'clock on Wednesday, the 6th.
Don't say Wednesday, the 6th.
The 6th. Was July 6th. At 3:00 PM.
And in between this, you're also sending communication to our parents.
Yep, correct. Yep, and that will happen on the 22nd, up to down, once they get all the official postings and things like that, ready for the newspaper.
I'm 100% okay with the DTE, we're going to use my initial, because I thought we might want some time or whatever before the July meeting, or is that not?
That doesn't, to me, that we can. Well, that's true, yeah, the person would, I mean, it is a light agenda, that academic standards, policy, employee handbook amendments, and then as well as student handbooks right now, and personal. Yeah, yep, I, the, the four, four city board members will be able to carry any questions. But it's a valid one, very valid.
Here's my.
I'm uncomfortable with you, I really am.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to publish on the 22nd. We're going to collect letters of interest through July 6th at 3:00 PM. Letters of interest will go to the district office, addressed to the clerk. Just probably. And I'll make sure that I talk about other, any type of talks of process. Okay. If he could highlight a process, I approve or recommend it. Sure, you know. Legal, you know, we will obviously don't do this very often, having an outline where we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's with the.
Okay.
And for the. Right, too.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah, put a plot, and our boss just put two districts on this, so, okay, all right. Then we, so we got the 18th, and then.
So we're going to move to 7.
We're going to move to 7, okay? Yeah. With interviews before, and you're going to set those to hang on, okay? Okay. And again, that will be published and pushed out to our families, through as well, and all of our, their records interviews. And then we have the 29th. Right here with that, that's before school starts, and then we've got our annual meeting, budget hearing on the 13th. So this, other September 1, where, where, so we can't, then we can fall back into the September 26th. Yep. We'll go at 6 o'clock, and then we'll start the student shooting up again, side of that too as well.
Okay, we have a motion, there's a second, there's a second, a motion and a second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Dean, thank you, to me, everyone.
You do, thank you.